Good evening. Welcome to the July 27th, now in the city's school district board. Please stand for the question.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Sorenson?
Present.
Trustee Redd? Trustee Turnquist?
Present.
Trustee Mitchell?
Present.
Trustee Patterson?
Present.
Trustee McOwen? Trustee Miller?
Present.
Trustee White?
Present.
Trustee Saunders?
Present.
Forum is present.
I'm not important. So we have the communication from the public?
There are no communications this evening.
I do have one from someone that told me to be raised to be on board. The question is, you know, this new world of diversity, we do not have or do we have or we're working on bilingual speakers in the district. We need people in some of the schools that speak Spanish because apparently there are students, mothers and students that come to the district and they don't get any, they can't communicate with the district employees. That's in some of the schools and even to the district. So we're working on some of the students. Correct.
We actually had, I didn't know this was coming up obviously, but we met last week about making certain that our telephone system recognized, was upgraded to recognize additional languages and revisiting the receptionist concept that we had talked to the board about last year, have a live person answering the phone with a specific emphasis on that person being bilingual. The next phase with that course will be making certain that there is someone particularly in registration, which we have, but even beyond that, the area of special education where there's a high traffic volume of limited English speakers where they have someone to translate for them. And then the next phase of that will be looking at how we diversify our work staff at the building level to address that. So we have started approaching that, starting at our busiest areas, telephone, student services and special education. And then we will look at having on board other folks and other touch points in the district.
Okay, so do we have like an ETA of how soon we can do this with the meeting? Maybe by September?
I think we will be able to onboard the receptionists by September, which board had already approved that previously. So we should be able to onboard that person by September. Be student services and student registration. We have someone there that we will be elevating to define, who usually have to call from the back for that purpose and then special ed. We have not addressed this yet with the principals at the building level and that will be a part of the summer retreat, the administrators in office.
And I think the concern was with special ed. I think that was the major concern of the question was that, especially if we have anyone that speaks Spanish or any other language and that was concerned. So frustrating.
I'm always going to mention that, and the fact that it's not only Spanish, we also have a large population of Portuguese speaking, we have a large population of patients that, you know, and we have others that we need to make sure that the staff, we hire staff that could handle this situation. Because as a bilingual, almost trilingual person myself, English not being my first language, even though I was born here, it's extremely frustrating when you have a family member that is trying to communicate to the, you know, the teachers and you do not have a mode of communication because, or even with the district. And that is something that I was going to mention, you know, thank God it brought it up, because that also was brought to my attention, the fact that people are trying to reach, you know, special ed, especially parents are trying to reach people to explain to them things are happening with their kids and they can't. And the other issue that we're having also is the fact that we are not translating IEPs. And by mandate, IEPs need to be translated to the language that the parent speaks. It's a mandate. It is law. It is not being done. The other thing is that IEPs are being written in professional jargon and we are right now in serious compliance because of that. That is also a mandate and IEPs need to be written in a language that the parents are able to understand. They cannot, we cannot be writing IEPs in professional jargons because parents are not teachers.
I'll meet with Mrs. Paul and give a plan in place. I would imagine the software must have a feature that does that. I'm sure that this is not unique to to help her. So we'll look at IEP direct and see if there is a feature. If we don't have it, we can purchase it and make that a part of the software and translate it.
I understand that you send letters out in different languages, but when you do local calls, I know, I didn't know that the review speakers knew this. But when you do local calls, some of the local calls, it's not you, it's not Spanish or what other other language, so how can we remedy that as well?
We'll have to put our heads together and figure out how to do that. One of the challenges with Blackboard, the local call system, is it times you out at a certain point. So we need to look at whether or not it's a feature that people can push a bunch and select their language.
Yeah, much when you make a phone call to the business.
Exactly, exactly. So we can talk and I can speak with, I can speak with Joe and see if that is a feature we can purchase on Blackboard for that purpose. IEP direct and what's the other, that's Blackboard.
Maybe we can get somebody in communications to come up with that as well. Because usually if they speak Spanish, they understand Portuguese or Brazilian. I know that happens a lot.
It's similar, but at the same time Portuguese, I do speak Portuguese and Portuguese is very, it has different accents and different, and it takes a while for, you know, for us to understand each other. Because, so it is similar, but at the same time, not that similar.
Well, I have a question against the piggyback on that. So how does a parent advocate look in that perspective? Because when you have parent teacher night conferences, just to give an example, in New York City, when we have a parent teacher night conference, what we do is we request for a certain kind of person who speaks that language. And so that on parent teacher night conference, they come in specifically for a specific family, et cetera. So how does our parent advocates look in regards to that? And I know that because I have two sons who had IEPs, that there's a parent advocate that is assigned to their parents. So is that person meshing with the individuals?
We do have members of our CSE who are multi-technical, social workers and psychologists in particular. So when parents are having their meetings around the IEP for their annual review, there is someone there. Also, when we have our public meetings, sped at sped at meetings in particular, there are interpreters there for parents as well. Now, that's not to say we shouldn't do a better job at it, we absolutely should, I don't doubt that for one moment. But we're not, we're not at a place where there's absolutely no one available to assist in these key areas.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I beg to refer, I know of a parent that had a problem with this and she didn't have a translator and she had to bring her own translator to translate for her.
For Mount Vernon?
For Mount Vernon.
I don't disagree with you, that may have happened, but we do have social workers and psychologists who are Spanish speakers and proficient in other languages.
I know, I know where I used to work, our ESL teachers were always available, whether service first or second grade, they were always in the area itself. Because I had parents that couldn't speak the language, but I would always be able to call when my ESL teachers also and interpreter. So excuse us, the microphones are down this evening, so we need to try to speak a little English.
But if there is a database of individuals who speak various languages, and so to, you know, reach out to those individuals, I'm not sure, how you go about paying for that?
Mm-hmm. However.
I'm sure in most schools there are people that speak different languages.
Right, but you may have somebody that speaks Mandarin Chinese and they have to go to another school for that and that can be, you know, complicated.
All right, so moving right along, we are going to the superintendent's report.
I have a report this evening.
All right, going right along to human resources.
Need a motion to accept the amendment to resolution 6.7 from June 15th, the approval to establish James titles at Central.
Motion.
Trustee White?
Second.
Trustee Mitchell?
I have a question. Did we address the situations that we spoke of the last time in regards to all these positions?
I need a refresher.
We were addressing of like, you know,
Title change?
Title changes and being appointed instead of?
Oh, yes. Yes, yes, yes.
Any other questions? Comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the establishment of new positions, item 3.2 under human resources. Trustee Mitchell?
Second.
Trustee Sorenson? Questions, comments, concerns?
How are we funding the, where's the funding coming from for the coordinator of CTE? And is that person going to be responsible for getting our program certified?
Yes, and it is, that position is already in the budget, we must change in the title.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. We need a motion to approve Human Resources Memorandum 40A certified, 40B non-certified, dated July 27, 2021.
Motion.
Trustee White?
Second.
Trustee Miller? Questions, comments, concerns? Seen enough? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
I'm just so happy, I just want to say, I'm just so happy to see so many of our pre-deed workers hired on as a permanent worker, on probation. I was so happy to see that, and those kids going on there for a while.
That's the work of mistake, bringing us into compliance with negotiating agreements.
It's Ms. Lucas who just, oh, she's in the hall. Emily Lucas from Angerman is outside, but she is, she helps with that, she facilitates.
I'm just so happy.
We need a motion for the appointment of medical staff for December 2021 sports physicals. Trustee Miller?
What number is that?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's 3.4.
Yes.
Second.
Second by Trustee Patterson.
I have a question. These are our new folks, just a couple of August, correct?
These are existing employees. Some of this, like Dr. Ma, is covered by the personal care contract that was approved at the reform meeting, but these are other district employees, yes, who are here for the summer just for physicals.
So the people who already handled the needs for the month of July, they're also staying on, yes?
Actually, I don't know the answer to that.
I think these are, these are district-wide nurses that are covering the sports physicals for the summer for our athletes to make sure they're clear for the fall season. It's a big carry stand, it's a big help to make sure everybody's eligible with physicals in the summer.
And by the way, while we're on this subject, most other districts, parents take their kids out to their own physicians to meet those physicals.
At their own expense.
At their own expense, exactly. So this is a courtesy that the district provides to our community.
Any other questions?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Motion to approve Business Office Memorandum Number 65, 4.1, dated July 27, 2021.
Motion.
Trustee Saunders?
Second.
Trustee White?
I have a question. For those of us that don't know, can you please explain the DEI policy?
That's diversity, equity and inclusion policy that we are at the first reading for. We are still working with the Public Security Committee to finalize it. I think most of the mayhem custody has been a consultation with board attorneys to finalize it. But our goal, of course, is to make sure all of our vendors understand this policy and the parameters of this policy so that they are in compliance in terms of specifics. We have put a halt on requiring the vendors to do that because we have, our board has not yet adopted that policy, so it's, can't give them something that this board has not approved yet. So we anticipated the next board cycle, that policy should be ready to be finalized.
Any other questions, comments?
I have a question. We didn't get that one.
I don't.
Not yet, he almost has a question.
Other than that, any other questions?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve School Improvement Resolution 5.1, authorization to approve Memorandum S 22-2, dated July 27, 2021. Trustee Saunders?
Second.
Trustee Mitchell?
I have a comment. This is 5.1. Yes. Tony, you said it was misspelled on document S 22-2, her name is Gammes, not Pannes.
It is named correct.
It's been corrected.
Sure.
We need to refresh this, it's my fault.
Okay, any other questions?
I have a question about the teacher center. Where was it located at?
Teacher Center, I'm not sure where it's located.
I'm not sure where it's located. I know it's in central Rochester, I'm not sure of the exact address.
I know they've been with us for a while, they've been here since I've been here.
Is 20 Broadway now, how long are you working on that?
Thank you. I'm sorry for my ignorance, but the teacher center is what?
It's a, an organization that provides mentoring to some of our teachers, some professional development, and they help us organize the teacher orientation. And it's a contractual obligation for teachers to be mentored. And when we are not able to provide that service in-house, you know, people aren't, ideally, we like to put a PE teacher with a PE teacher, a Spanish teacher with a Spanish teacher, and we rely on the teacher center to augment those services.
That is, we don't find people who care, our new teachers? Or is it just automatically?
Dr. Burman, can I speak on the teacher center? The teacher center is just looking for us as a learning education association to adopt them, and they provide a lot of professional development for the district. So it doesn't cost the district anymore, they just need an L E N to sort of host them. I think the Ms. Kernan was a former teacher in our district who's now running it, and they're very helpful in providing outside free professional development mentoring services. I work with the head of one of the ladies that provides our mentoring program, which you'll see probably next month, a resolution to make sure that we pair new teachers up with veteran teachers and there's compensation for it as well.
Also, basically, we are pairing our new teachers with veteran Mount Vernon teachers. This organization is just making sure that what's supposed to happen is happening.
No, they sort of just supplement it all with us. We have a mentoring program for our new teachers, it's a state mandate, and we provide a comprehensive program, that means monthly, they provide workshops, hourly, they have a lot of hours, they have a whole process involved.
No, I just wanted to make sure because for me it sounded a little bit weird hiring an outside agency to mentor our new teachers when we, you know, we need to make sure that we mentor our own teachers.
We do, we do. But there are occasions, again, some unique features where ideally, and it doesn't always work out that way, you want content-specific mentors assigned that is, and always work as neatly as that.
They also, they also support workshops and things like that for our teachers, and a lot of which our teachers are not even aware of.
So we have to make sure that they are aware.
Communication is out and there's, we offer a lot of different resources, as some of that committee have set in on the meetings, there's a lot of, there's a lot offered as support for our teachers that we really have to communicate is there and available.
So we have to make sure that happens.
They're there, yeah, and they, so, yes, they do a lot, a lot.
Trustee Mitchell, I like so much about what you said, it's really teachers for teachers. So sometimes, you know, we provide a ton of professional development and offerings, but this is local teachers that provide opportunities for local teachers in many districts, not just ours.
Thank you. Thank you, remember your clarification.
Any other questions?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
Trustee Miller abstains. Motion carries. Need a motion to approve School Improvement 5.2, authorization to approve School Improvement Personnel Memorandum P 22-2, dated July 27, 2021.
Motion.
Trustee Saunders?
Second.
Trustee Saunders. Questions, comments, concerns? Seen enough? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Resolution 6.0, need a motion to approve the Student Services Memorandum Number 2, dated July 27, 2021.
Motion, I have a question.
Second.
Trustee Miller?
6.1, on the attachment, executive content where it says, the CSE, the CSE part, and in the middle of what it says, alternate ID and it has decision, some of them have ineligible. So what does that mean?
Mrs. Paul?
Good evening. How are you doing today? So the board report lists all students that are eligible and ineligible for special education services. So any IEP that has finalized within that window of time in order to submit the report to the board, any decision made at the CSE will be captured in that report.
I see. Could we Google? Approved, approved, eligible and ineligible.
Correct.
So we also have, are we taking, I think it's for Ms. King?
Yes.
She's going to be on homebound, she's not going to be at the high school?
Oh, that's additional, additional work that they do after school.
Okay. All right, let's move on.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve Superintendent Resolution 8.1, authorization to extend a contract with MJB Communications.
Motion.
Trustee Mitchell? You have a second?
Second.
Trustee White?
I have a question. Can we have a, just an example of an event that I might remember where this, where MJB was involved and facilitated these services?
They just did a press conference on my Benjamin, yes, was that yesterday? Friday?
All the press we get in the papers is, they do all that. I have a question on this contract, though, it doesn't say, I mean, is, what is the extension?
30 days, just from July through August.
July 1st.
And this was just done so we have some coverage until we're able to onboard our communication personnel.
Right, I was just wondering, I didn't, I guess I did, so that's going to need?
So you're talking.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It says 2020.
Yeah.
It says, it says, it says, uh, June, July 20.
It says July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021.
Yeah, I don't see, I don't see any 30-day thing, I don't see any language that says 30 days, I don't see any, it says 2021.
It says, it says.
Where?
It says July 1st, 21 to August 31st, 21. At the top of it.
Oh, I see. Okay, so it's the existing contract, I'm sorry, I was looking at the actual contract.
And this, I'm sorry, so the actual contract does not?
Does not reflect what it says on the, the IEP.
The actual contract has already ended.
Yeah.
This authorizes us to continue the existing contract.
Right, it says at the bottom, the executive content, the contract with MJB is being extended through August 31st, provided cooperation.
And we, I mean, as we reserve rate extended into September, we don't have someone in place.
But shouldn't that say it on the contract, though, on the attachment? Shouldn't the attachment then say through August?
I mean, that would be a little, a little more buttoned up, but.
Additionally, are we saying that 30 days could exceed, could hit 62,500?
No, it would be appropriated.
Okay, so that would be the annual.
That's their annual amount, yes.
Okay, thank you. I had a little bit of our complications on that one.
So what are we doing? Are we adjusting this or are we, what are we doing to?
I think it should be adjusted. I think it should be adjusted. And come back with the.
Withdraw.
Can you go to the executive staff?
We have to, we have to.
Just be adjusted.
You have to sign the new, or new extension.
So let's just hold it, keep it aside.
Can somebody, Trustee White, I need you to withdraw your, your second.
I withdraw my second motion.
Mr. Mitchell?
I'd like to draw mine.
Thank you.
Motion to approve Resolution 8.2, the appointment of an internal claims order.
Motion.
Trustee Patterson? Trustee Saunders?
Questions, comments?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Okay, all right, so it seems like we're going to go into executive session for how long?
Uh, a bit, well.
Let's get excited.
We're probably going to need about hour and a half.
Hour and a half, so.
But there's no action afterwards, so.
So we're going to, this is the end of public.
This is the end of the public, but you know what, I want to say congratulations to Ronald Benjamin, I mean, today's his birthday. I want to have a wish to his birthday.
Yo, what's this, we want to use executive session for what purpose?
We are entering, we need a motion to enter executive session for the purposes of discussing the employment issue, particularly person-to-person, current and pending litigation, and to receive advice from legal counsel.
It's going to take an hour and a half.
I had one thing I wanted to mention that was on topic for one second, and that is the fact that there's a lot of feedback right now about principals in Mount Vernon, and of course, the fact that it is known that of course, the principal of Mount Vernon High School is not there anymore. And the question and the vibe, the temperature, of course, people that I've spoken to in the city is that there was a lot of seemingly access, which is normal, it happens with growth of anything from business to school districts, I'm sure. But the idea is that are we on top of this to make sure we're going to be setting in place? I have teachers, TAs, I have friends all over the place, and family, plus there's, again, the community would like to know, are we going to be dead spot on to have our principals in place this coming school year in September? And what the first day of school is going to be, because I haven't heard it, I haven't, it's not in my head. If you can mention it in front of the people, what is supposed to be the first day of school? And what are our targets for having our principals in place? Will we be buttoned up?
We have a timeline in place, but there are things that come up that we can't guarantee that timeline. People will pass background checks. People will, can't always agree on salary. We do have a timetable in place. Compacts are scheduled for six.
Elementary principals are next week. And the high school principalship will happen the following week. We're just hoping that all screening and background checks, as Dr. Hamilton said, are done by Friday, which is promised by the search firm, which was, which is the board. So they're working on that. They said they should have the candidates fed to us by Friday. And we have the people in place for all four compacts all ready. So as soon as we get the candidates back, then we're going to be ready to schedule.
All right. That's all we can hope.
So by the, definitely before the August 24th meeting, if, if we find candidates, we should be ready for that meeting.
But you still, any other questions? I just wanted to say you still have those AIPs in place to help.
Yes.
And tonight you did approve for three acting AIPs.
Yes.
Acting principals that are all AIPs to ensure that the hiring of teachers is happening, schedules are happening, so everything to prepare for the opening of school is happening. Whether, even in the absence of a principal.
But this is also including looking for permanent principals.
Yes.
And we haven't had.
It doesn't say, it doesn't mean, I'm sorry, it doesn't mean that those acting principals are automatically sliding to the.
No. As of right now, all of the acting principals are, are to end on August 31st because we expect to find candidates that will open this, that will be hired, onboarded by the August 24th meeting and open their own schools.
So I have a question. Those who are interim acting assistant principals, because an assistant principal is an apprentice to the principal. So those who are interim acting assistant principals, can they, I, I, I'm just going to ask you, but I already know the answer. Can they apply for the principal's position?
Yes.
Yes, they, okay. They can and they could have. There are AIPs who did, not these AIPs, but some AIPs did apply for the position.
Thank you.
Regarding first day of school, it's, everyone should have received the calendar. The calendar was mailed home. We got ahead of it this year.
I didn't get mine.
So September 9th.
I'm sorry. The calendars came on the day of that really, really bad rainstorm?
Yes.
Just as your expectation. If they were big and your mailbox was not, could not close over it. So mine is a little crinkly. So people may have thrown them out.
At least you got.
I'll take a picture and send it to you guys.
There's something. Nice.
Any other business? I'm sorry, we even have committee reports tonight.
So what did you have? Sorry, again. September 1?
First day of school, September 9th.
And our next board meeting is August 24th.
So do we have a motion on the table?
Do we have a motion on the table or?
Uh, we need a motion to go into executive session.
Motion?
Motion.
So we set the reasons, right? We set that one, right?
All right.
In favor?
Aye.
All right. Good night, everyone.